This meeting is being recorded per Governor Lamont's executive order seven B.
Okay, thanks. Upon motion duly made and seconded, I've been appointed as temporary chair for this evening's zoning board of appeals convened on March 22, 2021. The first item up for hearing tonight is application number six two four two dash twenty one. Don, I believe our tradition is that you would read these into the rec, the, you read the application into the record. Do I have that right?
Yes. So any member can go ahead if you have your agenda and read the application.
Don, do you want, do you want, um, do you want one of us to handle that? It sounds like.
I could do that, Mr. Chairman. So we have before us tonight, uh, public hearing, uh, number one, we have application number six two four two dash twenty one. One variance from section three, seven point three. B one, non-conforming buildings to allow non-conforming building to be enlarged contrary to the provisions of the regulations. Number two, variance from section four point one C. And that's agricultural zone dimensional requirements to allow building area of sixteen point five one percent as against ten percent maximum permitted. And number three is variance from section four point one C. Agricultural zone dimensional requirements to allow ten point three seven feet. Side yard setback as against twenty five feet minimum required. And this is the facility, the addition to the sort of, to the southeastern side of the building. And this variance is, this variance application is contingent upon the spending purchase agreement to acquire approximately four hundred square feet of land from adjacent property towards the south of the property and the location for this application is one thirty five Elm Street. The applicant is Jonathan McCosky. The open hearing deadline for this hearing is April twenty fourth. So obviously we have six to five remaining days. So, Mr. Chairman, what we have, we have three variances here on the same card. As you know, any number of appearances can be had on the same card.
Okay, so Charles, our tradition is now that we, we hear from the applicant on this one, and then we close comment on this one and move to the second application.
Uh, we will continue with this application. And then once we're done, we really, once we're finished with this application, then we move to this next one.
Okay, so, um, so I'll ask Mr. McCosky then if you can just say your name and address for the record and then talk about.
Before, before you go though, Mr. Chairman, I have a staff report. Um, which I usually read in the records before the applicant speaks.
Right.
So, um, the, the applicant, as we said, is Jonathan McCosky and the request is, uh, like we said, to allow a non-conforming building to be enlarged contrary to the applicable provisions of the regulations. And, um, we have variance for the sixteen point five one percent as against ten percent maximum permitted. And we have, um, the ten point three seven feet side yard setback. So, uh, to give you some background to this, uh, application, the applicant is interested in extending the southeastern section of his residential building. And, um, when checking the zoning map for the town, it was realized that the property is located within the agricultural zone. Thus making the residential building non-conforming legally non-conforming because it's a residential building, the property has been used for residential. The zone is agriculture. So the applicant was informed that the zoning regulations prohibits the expansion of a non-conforming buildings. And, um, that's according to section seven point three A five, which states as follows. No non-conforming use and no building containing a non-conforming use shall be created, extended or expanded unless A, the use is changed to a conforming use, or B, the commission has approved a special permit application demonstrated in so, in the sole judgment of the commission, compliance with the following conditions. One, the building and site shall be designed to enhance compatibility and reduce uncomfortability with abutting uses and the neighborhood. Two, adequate buffering shall be provided to minimize adverse impacts on adjacent uses and three, the nature and intensity of the use in relation to the size of the lot will be more in harmony with the neighborhood and more compatible with adjoining uses. Ultimately, the applicant is required to seek the commission's approval. So the applicant has entered into a contract to purchase approximately four hundred square feet of land, which would give an additional seven feet of setback, but would still be less than the required ten feet side yard setback. On the northern side of the property, um, another side of the property, the setback is currently twenty two point two feet. So there you have a legally non-conforming two point eight feet short of the required setback. Uh, also a portion of the house and the deck to the south has been extended approximately two feet into the side yard. So there's a second existing non-conformity of the building. The front of the building, uh, as a matter of fact, approximately a half of the building is within the forty foot front yard setback. Uh, there's no prior variance on record for this property. The applicant has entered into an agreement, like we said, with the adjourned owner, southern side of the building. And once, once this, uh, if this variance is granted, then the applicant would, um, the, the deal would go through, so to speak, and, and he would be able to purchase that additional. So, so conversely, if the, uh, motion, if the, if it fails to, to, to be approved tonight, then, um, the sale would not be binding on the applicant. So, so, so currently there's a five foot setback at that end, at that southern end. And that would move from five feet to ten point three seven feet with the additional land. So the applicant is, is making every effort here to, um, to, to, to get as close as possible to, uh, to the required setback. The agreement for sale is contingent upon this variance being granted. And, um, and so this is a building that's surrounded with non-conformities. As I just explained, uh, the closest residential zone, which is a residential zone, which is eight hundred feet approximately to the west. That requires a side yard, a minimum side yard of ten feet and a total side yard of twenty three feet. The C residential zone, um, is located, uh, two thousand feet to the south, which requires a minimum side yard of five feet and a total of fifteen feet. The required front yard setback is forty feet, as is typical for, um, all the zones in town. So in concluding, uh, this is a property which has a legal non-conforming use. Being a residential, uh, property and a residential building in an agricultural zone. This non-conforming building, uh, exists by rare area. It's, um, it's fifteen, it's one thousand five hundred and nineteen square feet, which already represents thirteen percent of the building area as against ten feet required. Uh, a few legal non-conformant setbacks, which is typical of a number of residences in this agricultural zone. And it's because of the location of these houses and agricultural parcels with a twenty five feet uh, setback, this twenty five feet setback is, uh, designed, uh, for agricultural use and not for residence. Like I pointed out, uh, the closest residential districts and, um, there, there's not one single residential district that asks for twenty five feet setback for one yard. So, so, so ten percent of the building area, which is what the regulations ask for, that also is being, um, expanded now to, I think it is sixteen point five percent. So, so thus makes it necessary for the, um, request for variances. So, um, this property is requesting a side yard setback of eleven, no, I'm sorry, that's ten point three seven. So staff has no objections to this variance being granted, uh, subject to the acquisition of the aforementioned property to the south. It appears that if this basis denied, like I said, the, um, sale agreement will become null and void. And that's, um, my, uh, report on this, um, variance request.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate it. Um, Mr. McCosky, we can hear from you now on the application.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. I want to clear.
Um, yeah, so Charles, uh, you know, went through just about everything there. I can share my screen and show the, the building plot if that's something everybody wants to see, you can kind of understand, understand a little more what Charles was talking about.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, let me see if I can share. Oh, says host disabled attendee screen sharing, so.
Okay, so in that case, um, let me see if, um, what did it say? I had, um, disabled screen sharing?
Yes, it's host disabled attendee screen sharing.
Okay, I guess that's, um, done automatically from the setup. So, um, in that case, let me, um, let me attempt to, um.
Yeah, well, as Charles tries to get that up so everybody can see, the intention of this building addition is for a main living level master addition. Um, it will be built up on peers because this is also the one hundred year floodplain zone. So this is on AE. I did go through the inland wetland commission last week. They did approve this, this addition as far as their standards are concerned. We have added in some provisions to mitigate floodwaters and things like that with a rain garden. You know, Charles really talked about most of what's gonna, what's gonna go on. If anybody has any specific questions, I, you know, love to answer them.
So if we look at the map, the way I'm looking at the, the map of your property and it's a rectangle oriented this way. And if I'm understanding properly, you're going to buy a small rectangle that's adjacent to it outlined in the green.
Correct. I don't, I don't see the, the green outline. But yeah, if you're looking at the, um, the plot plan, um, with the street on the right side, you would see at the bottom, there is like, yeah, a jutted out piece here. It's about four hundred square feet. That would be the piece that, uh, we would purchase from David Anderson of Anderson Farms. Um, I have a contract should be, should be on file. I believe I gave a copy to Charles stating, you know, once this variance is approved, then that contract becomes live and then I will, um, purchase this piece, you know, I have the lawyer set up to, to take care of those things. And obviously Jim Dutton has surveyed this and added that to our parcel, which we would then, uh, submit the lot line adjustment with the town and go through all those steps to, you know, attach this to our existing parcel.
And then once you have that attached, you are then anticipating you'd be in full compliance with the two very, with the two regulations.
Um, I, yeah, ideally, I mean, we tried to buy as much as we could, as much as Mr. Anderson would, uh, would part ways with, um, him being a farmer, you know, land is his business. So he was able to, you know, accommodate us with this seven foot piece, trying to get, I tried to get to that twenty five, um, and, you know, eliminate the need for the variance. This is what was accepted by him. So this is what we, you know, agreed upon.
So are, I just don't understand that. With, with this addition, are you compliant without the variance or with this addition, you'll be at the sixteen percent?
So, yeah, with, with this addition, the full lot coverage will be sixteen percent with, with this parcel here. My, my main intention was the twenty five foot setback. Um, and then as we got into this process, realized there was the lot coverage and, uh, the, you know, the other variances discussed. So, um, you know, initially I was trying to get the twenty five foot from the new addition. But, you know, we just couldn't, he couldn't accommodate that, that much length. So we did get, you know, the ten point three seven feet. So that at least gets us closer and into, you know, a typical residential zoning sort of setback.
I just have a question. Is, um, the map that you're trying to put up, Charles, the same one as we have in our packet?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm looking at them up on my screen. I thought you were seeing it, but it seems you are.
But we have it, we have it in our packet, so.
Okay, so if you have it in your bucket and you.
Yeah.
Are you able to see, because I have it on my screen. Are you seeing it or am I not doing something?
Well, I don't see it.
Okay, so you are, you are screen sharing. So as far as I'm concerned, it should be shared with everyone, but it seems to me that I'm the only person seeing it for what reason, um.
But I, I don't think it's really necessary if we all have it in the packet.
Okay, so, so just, just to, um, reiterate one, but, um, Mr. McCosky said and to, to, um, shed some more light on, on, on this. Um, so we have three variances, all right? So the first variance in itself is to pretty much have the non-conforming, um, building expanded. So that is something that is going to be going to the planning and zoning commission. And, and, and because the, the building is, is being expanded, we have, um, we, we have a result in two other variances. So then the one that the applicant just spoke about is, um, that to this, to the southeastern side of the property, there is, um, delineated by that red line, if you can see it on your, um, the pocket that I sent you. This, this original red line that says existing, that is the original, um, property boundary, which would be five feet from this extended section of the building. So this rectangular hatch area here, to the, to the, to the, uh, east of the, of the building. That's the addition that Mr. McCosky is gonna, um, put on to enhance his, his residential building. And by, by, by doing this, by, by extending this building out, um, it would have been five feet from this, um, existing property line. But because he attempted to, um, get as close as possible to the twenty five feet, he, he acquired this, um, next piece of property adjacent, um, to his property. And that's an additional seven feet. So that's what, um, comprises the new, uh, the setback variance that he, that he is requesting. And then the, the final variance is for the, is for the building area. So the original building area is already in excess of the required ten percent because it's thirteen percent, thirteen, uh, it's thirteen percent as it is. Now with the addition, it would be sixteen point five one percent. So he's moving from third, from a non-conformity of thirteen, uh, percent to, 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 um, to sixteen point five one percent. If that explains it, Mr. Chairman.
Any of the members of the board of appeals have questions? If not, I'm all set. Um, and I guess what do we do now, Charles? Do we just, do we vote now or do we, um?
So, so you.
Application closed public comment.
You have the choice of, um, so the, the meeting is divided into two sections. There's a public hearing section and a public meeting section. So what you, you may, um, leave this open if you want a table, or you may close the public hearing for this one. Then move on to, um, to the second public hearing. When both public hearings would have been heard, then we go to the public meeting and then we take the first one and then, um, we could have discussions, we could vote on it and whatever. Likewise, the second application, we take that one, we make motions, we could vote on it. I mean, you guys could vote on it and, um, that's the necessary action.
Last, thanks, Charles. So any other questions from the ZDA members? If not, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Opposed. All right, so the, this portion of the public, of the agenda is closed for public hearing. We'll move to the, uh, next application. And, uh, Charles, would you like to read that one into the record?
The next application that we have here is, um, from, um, the Walcott Hill Properties and, um, it's a variance from section six point two B two to allow parking spaces serving business use at six eighty three to six eighty nine Walcott Hill Road to be located on section of the property zone, zone, uh, for residential. And, um, this is, this variance is also, um, contingent upon the residential property, uh, which is known as tax ID number one seven seven zero nine five, being combined with six eighty three to six eighty nine Walcott Hill Road. So, uh, six eighty three to six eighty nine Walcott Hill Road, um, is located in general business district, pretty much between Dix Road and Clearfield. Uh, the property, uh, the existing property, which, uh, has, uh, three businesses. I think it has a pizza, a Leo's Pizza, a barber and a wine store. Um, it's located in the general business district, uh, and that parcel is, uh, seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet or point one six three acres. And the floor area, uh, is approximately, by my calculation, um, it's four thousand two hundred square feet. And the applicant can, um, attest to that, uh, if he has a different figure, because the reason why I came up with that is I was unable to access that property information on the assessor's website because of some recent change in the, in the tenure of the property. I was not able to assess it, but I did some rough calculation and I came up with four thousand two hundred square feet in, um, floor area, gross floor area for that, uh, property. Um, there's a residence on the upper floor and then there are six parking spaces directly in front of this building. In all, there are eighteen parking spaces in front of building and the adjacent building, no, because there's, there's also six seventy five Walcott Hill Road, uh, which is at the corner of Walcott and Dix. And I mentioned this because there's a, the parking is spread right across the front of these two, uh, properties and it's a total of eighteen. Like I said, six is in front of the subject property. I, my assumption here is that whichever, uh, client comes, they could park in any of these spaces. So the applicant owns the vacant lot directly behind six eighty three to six eighty nine. And that's to the west of the, of the subject property. And like I said, it's ID number one seven seven zero nine five, which is approximately three thousand four hundred and ninety square feet or point zero eight acres. Um, so with the parking requirement of five spaces per thousand square feet of retail or service business. Okay, so, um, as I was saying, um, with a parking requirement of five spaces per thousand square feet of retailer service businesses and, uh, and two spaces for residential unit, the subject property would be required to provide a total of twenty two spaces. So the applicant is proposing to combine the residential lot with the subject property in order to provide additional parking. And, um, that, that new parking area, which is the only residential that has, um, approximately nine spaces, uh, which would end up being, having a total of fifteen spaces for, um, that property, which would still be deficient, um, in, in required spaces according to the regulations. But it would, it would improve the, uh, existing non-conforming, uh, situation. So this, this added parcel, uh, according to the applicant would provide much needed parking for the property. And, um, for this staff recommends approval for this application.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate that. Um, so now we'll hear from Mr. Pappas.
Okay, uh, the property actually where the parking.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is John Pappas. My address is thirty four Kent Lane in Rocky Hill, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Trying to add parking that we never had. We've been there for forty five years. I recently purchased most of the rest of the building when my father owned part of it. And I purchased the property behind us, which was a house and a non-conforming lot. The non-conforming lot is between, you know, behind our, uh, business, Leo's Pizza, six eighty nine Walcott Hill Road. It is actually between Dale Road and Clearfield, not Dix Road. And there's seventeen parking spaces up front because when they did the crosswalk, we lost the spot. Uh, ever since D and D moved in, which I guess was busier, a little busier now than bliss market was. And the people bought the market after bliss market, we've been parking in one of my neighbor's driveways. Three of my employees got permission because a guy no longer lives here, was in Florida. So it's, it's been hard right now ever since they came in for my employees to actually park and come to work. Never mind me keeping the barber shop vacant over the last four years because I'm afraid to put something in there because it'll, you know, it'll hurt my business for parking reasons. You know, a lot of times we deliver and I see my drivers driving around the front of the building, trying to find somewhere to park. So a few years back, I bought the house behind us and we came up with a plan. I think Charles has the blueprint. And we're trying to fit nine to ten spots if we can, which will help us, you know, at least it'll get my employees somewhere to park. They come to work and they actually have a place to park and get to work. Uh, we just did some drainage work in the back of our building. We had an old dry well that was starting to fail and it was flooding. Uh we just did some drainage work in the back of our building. We had an old dry well that was starting to fail and it was flooding one of the lower levels of our building. So over the last month or so, we ended up going about two hundred feet. There was no drainage on Clearfield, so we had to go to Dale Road and we just put up you know, another sixty feet worth of drainage up Dale Road to a catch basin in front of uh fifteen Dale, which is the house where the non-conforming lot is behind. So at this point, I'm just asking permission, you know, to make make it actually a safer a safer area too because obviously you guys know where we are. That's always been an issue of parking there. It's it's tough. You know, we had a couple of uh a couple tragedies in front of our building, you know, one of the peoples that worked for me, her mother got hit by a car and got killed there over about four or five years ago, maybe a little longer now. So it was always my intention to try to get that back lot and try to try to alleviate some of that parking. You know, so you see we have, you know, a full a full market in us, seventeen spots is is crazy. And since the time D and D came in, you know, when Bliss Market was there with us for you know, forty years or so, how long they've been, you know, we've been there together with them. They always park their employees on Clearfield Road and they allowed their employees to park behind their business where the new owner does not want his employees to park behind his building. So he's taken up more of the street parking. His employees come earlier than us. We open at ten thirty. It, you know, his store opens much earlier. So when we get to work, when all these years we're able to park on the road on Clearfield, we get there now and we're blocked out. You know, some of its employees have been parked in there. And uh it it leaves us, it leaves us short. So I'm asking you for this variance, you know, just uh try to alleviate that problem. I don't know what else to say, but that's, you know, that's what I'm looking at. Actually, the drainage was a huge expense. You can imagine digging sixty feet down a town road to add drainage just because, you know, there was and I had to go two hundred feet through the back of that Dale Road property to get there. So that part, you know, at least that part is done. It'll handle the parking lot right now with what we have drawn up on the print. So if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, thanks. So the lot behind you, uh shown on the map, we have it in our materials. That's what's there now? Is it just uh concrete or is it grass?
It's grass, grass. They had an old wooden fence, you know. The period ago, wo- wooden fence. We would, we would make that a lot nicer. We would actually put a fence back up around the parking lot. We have drawings in here, maybe shrubbery and uh more more or less a nice white vinyl fence.
Yeah, that's I was gonna ask you, is there any fencing right now between that lot and and uh either number eleven on Clearfield or number fifteen uh on the opposite street? Is there fencing?
Yeah, it it was the fence put up by uh it was put up years ago by Jeff Walcox, actually. And he brought the house behind which fifteen Dale Road is the house behind D and D Market and the lot comes all the way. It comes from Dale to Clearfield. The non-conformant parcel of that lot is actually very behind me and they just put this old wooden fence up the you know, put it up just to hide, I guess, or just to put in their property, to close in their property. And that goes, that fence was between our building and them, came down Clearfield and went between, I think, I don't know what the house number is, but it bill, I know Bill Smith owns the house. And that's where we're actually parking our cars in his driveway because he's been in Florida for years. And there's that old wooden fence goes between his parcel and the parcel on uh on uh behind fifteen Dale. We would clean all that up and make it obviously a lot nicer.
I have a question about employee parking. Would the parking be only for your employees or could customers go in there too?
I would like customers to be able to use it also, you know, utilize some of the street parking that we've been utilizing over the years and allow some of our customers to use it, the package store, the, you know, the package store. The my vacant, my vacant parcel there now that used to be the barber shop. If you can imagine, I had a lot of people coming in and asking to rent that spot. But if it was another barber or beauty parlor and they put two or three of their own employees and had two or three customers coming in to get a haircut and then another couple waiting. There's no way I could ever do it. So I gotta find and, you know, at one time it was a gentleman named Sal. It was a barber by himself.
Right.
So it's making it hard for me. I'm I'm sitting on a on a place where I can be collecting rent and it's been vacant for four or five years.
Oh, I think I asked the question because I was wondering, how about the people? Have you had any neighbors complain about the idea of traffic going in and out? If it was just employees, there wouldn't be the you know, the constant in and out. Excuse me, Charles, could you take screen sharing off? Because I don't know anybody else, but all I'm seeing is your files. Okay, thanks. Um so would there be? There would be. There also.
Yeah, and plus tenant park. And right now, though, I'm lucky I have a tenant upstairs. He, Charles told you there was one resident and the lady doesn't have a car.
Okay.
That's me out. So we try mostly, you know, for our employees. Obviously, I need a place for my employees to park. And if Bill ever sells his property, I lose three spots in his driveway.
Is that the house uh adjacent to the lot that you're intending?
Yeah, so so our building, our buildings up on Walcott Hill Road, you come down to behind our building, it's the vacant lot. And the house directly next to the vacant lot down further, Clearfield Road, that's the, that's where we've been parking.
Okay, I mean, I did drive by, so I I know what I was wondering if that neighbor had any problems because really that's the neighbor that's most impacted and the one on that backs up to it on from Dale Road. And there's no.
I I talked to Mark about it. Mark's been there forever and ever. He actually comes in and helps me get the store ready in the morning.
Okay.
And he never had a problem with it. I always had, like I said, I've been there for, we've been there since nineteen seventy-five. Hopefully, after all these years, I have good rapport with our neighbors, you know.
So like, looking at the way it is now, the plan looks like it would be a vast improvement to the way the lot looks at the moment.
We've been improving the building over the last few years since we own the building ourselves. Before it was divided into condos and the turf farm owned some of the top condo. And they did not want to do any improvements on the building, but just lately we did the siding over the roof, the windows. So I'm trying to get the drainage fixed and the next plan is to try to get some additional parking.
Now, your plan shows plantings. You mentioned a fence, but the plan shows, I believe it said arborvitae.
Yeah, they want to put arborvitae. I'm not too sure which way I want to go, you know, I if the arborvitae's overgrow and become as close to the sidewalks. The lady who who owned the house before, she had shrubbery back there and she never maintained it and it was coming over the sidewalk. I just removed all that shrubbery. I want to do maybe a combination of both the fence and the arborvitae's because I think the fence would hide the parking lot. So it'll, it'll look like someone's residential back lot. If you had a back lot to your house and you put a fence up there, you know, that would help it and maybe put some miniature shrubbery instead. That's easier to maintain and probably won't grow over onto the sidewalk.
Okay, I guess the plan, you know, I was going from the plan that you.
Right, right, right.
I would be preferable to some kind of shrubbery as opposed to just a white vinyl fence.
No, no, I I am too. I want to put some shrubbery up there also.
Especially on the street, especially on the street side. Quite honestly, if it was a white vinyl fence facing um Clearfield, I would not be in favor of that.
No, but I'm, I I am picture, you know, the opening, the white vinyl fence and more miniature shrubbery instead of something that grows bigger.
Yeah.
Also, some, you know.
Can't have a twelve fence facing Clearfield anyway. That's against zoning regulation, so it could only be four feet.
Thanks for including that, Rita.
All right, I, well, I I'll find, I'm fine with the shrubbery either way, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever makes you guys happy. I would, you know.
That's me. The other, I, one other question before um. How about the trash receptacles that you have showing on Clearfield right now? Would they be moved behind so they wouldn't be out showing?
They have them right there now, you know, and that's where they always been. And if we have room to put them back there, I'd like to put them back there. Right now, it's hard for the for the truck to get back in there to empty them. So that's why they're put over there. Because we had such a narrow driveway, they they went in there, they kept hitting the lady's fence.
Yeah, I was. Shows the driveway that maybe they could be behind instead. I think that would be.
There's a lone uh loading area there. See, we're, we're, we've been looking at the plan and we've been talking to the end town engineer. We were thinking about lowering the pitch, which would make it easier for us to pull things back there. So we're trying to make it more of a level lot as to the lot that's shown in the plans. So once we did the drainage, got now from the back of our building down Clearfield, we seen other things that we can possibly do to make it improve the the plan.
Is there a, do you have a timetable then?
It all depends. It depends if I get the approval. So right now we did the drainage and I had to stop. You know, so either I get the approval and we go ahead and try to get the parking lot in, which I'd like to do, you know, soon as possible or or I wasted a lot of money. I I plant a grass seed again.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
John, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine. I have a question for you. So um as far as the parking lot goes, um what were you looking to put blacktop there or were you gonna make that?
No, it would be black, obviously it would be blacktop.
Um I was just wondering what's the um as far as the uh, when it rains, what's the runoff situation look like over there in that property?
We did water studies and everything. It's done through the print, so that's already been already incorporated into your print. There'd be galleys that would go in there and would retain some of the water before we put it out to uh the street.
And and um applicants will be presenting a site plan to the plan and zone commission, correct, Mr.?
Yeah, I already actually gave them those plans and I said Derek has the plans too as town engineer. And we've been discussing different options with him because right now, obviously, the drainage he allowed me to do was to get the water out from the back of our building that where the dry well was failing and was flooding into our building. So there, you know, whatever we did on the plan, we might do a couple just fin changes. And I've been in touch with Derek about it, so.
Okay, thank you for that.
And that's all just strange to try to improve, but we already already started.
Are there any other questions or?
I have. Somebody else, go ahead. Um I, this may have been on your plan and I may have missed it. How about lighting? Is there?
Not lighting. We might put lighting off the back of our building and shine it. So that's what it is right now. But I never put the light on because I never wanted it to shine into uh Bill's house and we.
That's what I'm really thinking because now if you're gonna use it for parking for.
It was directional. I'm sorry, it'd be directional off my building and facing down into the parking lot. So it would shine out into anyone's houses. I'm an electrician by trade, by the way. So I already, I already thought about that also. How we would probably mount the lights in our building to face it down into the parking lot to give enough light, put enough to see, but not really, you know, shine it to anyone else's house. And it it would go off. The latest we're over there is, you know, ten on the week, weekdays and ten thirty at night. So I I would leave the lights on maybe till eleven and shut them off or leave one for security.
Okay.
I think uh are there any other questions from the commissioners? No? All right, then I guess I I will move, I would request a motion to close the public hearing portion on this application.
I moved closely public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
I.
This portion of the hearing is closed and now we can open the uh portion of the meeting, the public meeting portion of the of this, on the first application and then we'll take the second one in uh in sequence. And is there any discussion on the first application, six two four two dash twenty-one? Mr. Murkowski's here, uh application.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Char- um Charles, I just want to make sure just so this is on the record. For the um the first application, there is no impact um to the uh community uh for the variance for this property, is there?
Um not as far as I see, however, um as I pointed out earlier, when this goes to the uh plan and zoning commission, they will be um looking into um because they're going from a uh they're making a use, when they go to the commission, the commission will take all the necessary uh requirements into consideration.
Is there any other uh, you know, discussion from the commissioners on this one? Is there a motion either in favor or against this application?
I make a motion that would accept the application as submitted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is in favor? I.
I.
Oppose? So it's four to zero, motion carries. All right, so now we will close the public meeting portion on this application and proceed to the public meeting on the second application, six two four three dash two one. Is there any discussion from the commissioners on this application? Sandra, you may be on mute.
Sandra, is Sandra present?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, have the neighbors, are they aware of a parking lot going in this area or are they any opposition?
I sent, you mind me, so can I speak?
No, no.
Okay.
So so it's it's just because the public here has been closed where I um but um the the neighbors has been sent a notification, a sign has been posted uh on on the subject property, two signs, one on Walcott Hill and the other on Clearfield. I've had a couple of calls, a few people called and we explained to them what was going on and um some expressed um the need for parking. They thought it was a good thing, but um we didn't get any objections or anything like that.
Okay, I'm just worried about the noise, car doors slamming, and if people are aware that this could be bringing more noise to that area.
Well, the owners were aware, I can tell you that the um adjoining owners within within three hundred feet got notified and then there was the um the signs. And then there was a um legal ad in the newspaper. So I think we covered um we did everything possible to to, you know, let the um neighbors aware of what would be happening and they they don't seem to be any objection from anyone.
It's a fair point. It's a fair point. There's no one testifying here tonight in opposition of it. Uh they have a fair opportunity to that. My personal observation is it is that this has to be an improvement over having employees parking the neighbor's driveway. I can't imagine how difficult that must be.
Right.
And when I, when I drove by, the, some of your employees, I believe, happened to be changing shifts and they were moving their cars on Clearfield. And I would, I think that's probably even more disturbing than to have them be up in a parking lot, especially if it was well, you know, fenced or landscaped.
That's a fair point, Rita. I thought your points about the trash were good. You know, there seems to be a plan there. And then um I think the applicants' plan with shrubbery and fencing makes sense, so I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I think it will be, it could be a really big improvement, actually.
Yeah.
I didn't, don't usually down Clearfield when I go to Leo's to pick up my pizza. But um when I did go to drive by, I was kind of like saying, whoa, this, this doesn't look good.
Yeah, yeah. Uh any other comments from the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to approve the application?
They also want to make. They also wanna make a motion?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Thanks, Sandra. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so.
There is. Okay, so we'll close the public meeting portion on that application. I believe the only other business we have tonight is to approve the minutes from.
Mr. Chair.
Second, yes.
If you, if I may, I would like to make a motion to uh postpone the minutes until next meeting. Uh, given that um, a lot of the members that. Are um, that were that, that were at that meeting aren't present tonight, so I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Yep, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
This is Joshua, thank you. Hi, is there any other business before the commission this evening, Charles?
Uh, as far as I know, there is no other um, general matters uh for you tonight. Um, no public comments or anything.
Charles, could I bring up an issue that I've been noticing in town? A lot of uh people putting their signs on different corners, advertising their business. Those are starting to pop up now on the snowshells. Can public works go around and remove those?
We have been having that um ongoing problems and um. I myself has been going out, I, I, I must say that I've not done so for the longest while because of, you know, different reasons and. Everything, but I, we use, I myself personally used to go out and move the legal signs and um. Pretty soon I will be out there again and with, with um, the, the um town manager. I are trying to come up with some way of um. Of finding these, these um violators for that type of thing, so um, yeah.
Good, um, well, thank you everyone for attending. I believe that's all the business in front of us this evening. If uh, if there's a motion to adjourn, you can hear that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Nobody wants to adjourn, second.
Fair, aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Jim, for filling in.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night, all.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Good night, thanks again.